Traffic today has just been a bad day for traffic. But I wanted to say thank you for joining us. My name is Nicola Hines and I serve as the Voting Coordinator for Cobb Collaborative, Vote Your Voice Initiative. Cobb Collaborative is a nonprofit organization that educates, engages, and empowers local people and organizations to improve outcomes for children and families in Cobb County. We partner with various organizations and causes, but we focus on these three areas to make the most significant impact on our community: mental health, literacy, and civic engagement. I've had the pleasure of working with an incredible group of community leaders to organize this event and want to make the time to acknowledge them. Please stand when I introduce you. We have Meiling Jabar, the Community Engagement Manager for Redefine Ed Atlanta, a public education nonprofit that works to transform metro Atlanta into a place where every student in every community receives a great K through 12 public education. Thank you, Meiling. And Redefine Ed, they do great works and they're actually incorporating it to Cobb County. They started in Atlanta, so you'll see more of them. Dr. Monica Willis-Brown. Raise your hand, Dr. Brown. She's the Chief Organizer and Lead Researcher for the Center of Common Grounds Cobb County Democracy Center, a nonpartisan voting rights organization that educates and empowers voters of color. Dr. Lisa Ford. Dr. Ford, there she is in the back. Dr. Ford is the first president of the Marietta Roswell Alumni Chapter, Alumni Chapter, known as EMRAK, of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. EMRAK is a service organization that provides programming to address the diverse needs of communities in Cobb, Norfolk and Cherokee Counties. This includes but is not limited to college scholarships for young women, an economic summit and health fair, advocating for change in our society through social action initiatives. Lastly, we are grateful for the support of Rafael... I was about to say, wait, we've been practicing all day, so I'm gonna do this all... Rafael Aragon. Rafael, a community organizer with Mi Familia Inacion, whose mission is to build Latino power through activation of the community and year-round investment in local infrastructure. Rafael is providing live Spanish interpretation services for our in-person attendees. So if anyone does need interpretation and need a better listening device, please go see Rafael in the back so that he can provide you with those devices. To learn more about how you can become involved in each of the host organization's work, please stop by the tables that are outside after the program and visit their websites. Finally, I also want to give a special thanks to Switzer Library for providing this space. They are so lovely to give us this lovely space here, and I love this library, it's so great. We have a few housekeeping reminders and want to establish some norms to ensure that this event is safe and welcoming for everyone. The restrooms are outside of the door to your right. So if you, there's restrooms here, and so you just go down this little hallway and it's right down. The event is being livestreamed. For those who cannot make us in person, you can visit us on livestream, it'll be on YouTube. And as already mentioned, we have a live Spanish interpreter, so we kindly ask that audience members to keep the noise in the room to a minimum in order to not interfere with the sound of our virtual attendees and Spanish interpretation services. We also ask kindly audience members to remain seated so as to not block the view of our virtual attendees. So if you look behind you, there are two cameras, we want to make sure that our virtual attendees can see what's going on. If you need to stand, please exit your row at the end closest to the walls. Finally, given the political nature of this event, we understand that maybe viewpoints expressed by our audience members may agree or disagree with. Regardless, we want to ensure all candidates' views and opinions are respected. Therefore, disruptive noises or comments in response to candidate statements, whether in support or opposition, will not be allowed. So let's get started. We are excited for our program tonight. We all will have the chance to hear from several candidates for the Cobb County School Board of Election and learn more about their stances on pressing educational issues such as school safety, student achievement, and student mental health. School boards play an essential role in shaping the quality of public education that our students receive. Cobb County School Board members are responsible for appointing the district superintendent, approving the district budget, and establishing policies that shape how schools operate. By voting for your school board members in the November 5th election, you all get to determine who holds this great responsibility. We hope you all walk away today with insightful information that will aid you in making an informed vote for Cobb County School Board. Most importantly, this is a nonpartisan forum with all contested school board candidates invited. And I stated "all" school contestants were invited to the school board. While we repeatedly reached out to all candidates for their participation this evening, unfortunately, we did not receive confirmation from everyone. So the format of tonight's program has shifted slightly to include post-three candidate who is running unopposed. Originally, as you saw the flyer, it was District 1, 5, and 7. For time purposes, we will not open the floor for questions from attendees, but we have incorporated questions that were submitted from the community members when they registered. All confirmed candidates received the rules ahead of time, and I'm going to highlight some of the main rules as a reminder to the candidates and for the audience purposes. One, candidates opposing today does not mean that any of our organizations are personally endorsing any of the candidates that have shown up today. Each candidate will have two minutes for opening and a closing statement. They will have between 60 to 90 seconds to answer a question unless the moderator with notice to all candidates before asking a special question. Also, more or less, time is answer a specific question. Because this is a forum and not a debate, rebuttals by candidates are not permitted. And I've done this for a long time, so we will be watching the rules and making sure that we do not do that and have a rebuttal going on. Candidates must limit their responses to the questions asked and refrain from personal comparison to other candidates. This is about them applying for their job. Personal attacks by one candidate on another candidate, an elected official, current administration on any governmental level, or past administration on any governmental level will not be tolerated. Once again, this is a job interview, so they should be putting their best foot forward of why they are the best candidate, not a comparison. I'm so excited to say that tonight we will be joined by Dr. Vicky Benson, post-one candidate, Leroy Trey Hutchins, post-three incumbent and candidate, Laura Judge, post-five candidate, and Andrew Cole, post-seven candidate. Thank you to each of them for making the time to participate in this forum. For those who are joining currently online, once again, all candidates were invited to participate this evening. For your awareness, the following candidates are also running for school board post 1, 5, and 7, but will not be present this evening. Randy Shackenhorn, post-one incumbent and candidate, John Crisador, well, Crisador, okay, post-five candidate, and Brad Wheeler, post-seven incumbent and candidate. We encourage you to also reach their platforms to learn more about their priorities. Before we invite our candidates up, I'm excited to introduce our moderator for tonight, Mr. Chesley McNeil. Chesley McNeil joined Eleven Alive in 2009 as the meteorologist for the morning and afternoon news, and instantly became Atlanta's most popular on-air personality. In addition to his career in television, Chesley has taught both undergraduate and graduate-level meteorology and earth science courses at several colleges and universities. He's been awarded the prestigious American, sorry, American Meteorologists Society Seal of Approval, and is a certified broadcast meteorologist, and is the recipient of numerous professional awards. He is a member of the American Meteorology Society, the National Weather Association, and the National Association of Black Journalists, and a proud member of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated. About to bring me back to undergrad, right? In 2013, he was named by the Governor of Georgia to serve to the severe weather task force. Chesley was recently introduced into the 2024 class of the National Academy of Television Arts and Science Civil Circle for making a difference in television industry for 25-plus years. Please join me and welcome Mr. Chesley McNeil.
Looking to see if there was any Omegas in the house that might jump on you, you know, I'd say back up, bros, back up, back up, it's all right. Good evening. Everybody all right? Yeah, I'm so glad you are here and thank you for inviting me, I really appreciate being here tonight. Tonight shows me that you came because you are at least interested, concerned, or just have a love for Cobb County schools, and it's a good thing, right? And you're interested in who will govern those schools. When you talk about a school board, yes, they govern those schools, making sure that our students have what they need not only to excel in school, but also in society. And so I'm happy you're here tonight. And for those of you who are joining us online, good evening. All right. So I want to introduce you to the candidates, and let me just get this out of the way. No, I don't think the next storm will come here. We are talking about a storm in the Gulf, still has some days to form, 40% chance right now over the next seven days, but I don't think it will make it here. That's a forecast, not a promise. All right, all right. All right, so without further ado, let me introduce the candidates to you, tell you a little bit more about them. Running for post-one Democratic candidate, Dr. Vicky Benson. Dr. Vicky Benson is a professional educator, entrepreneur, and author with diverse experience in teaching and school leadership roles for over 26 years in secondary and 10 years in post-secondary education. She has been a resident of Cobb County for 13 years and is married to Lee, who is a proud, and she is a proud mother and grandmother. Dr. Benson formerly taught science in Cobb County and Fulton County schools, contracted three years as an educational consultant coach with North Star Consultant Educational Group in Clayton County School District. She currently holds a Georgia Educator Certificate in Biology, National STEM Educator Certificate, and is in the process of renewing her Educational Leadership Tier 2 certification for Georgia. Currently, Dr. Benson teaches in Chambers County School District, which is located about 20 minutes from the Georgia line. Which side? West side, east side? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. For those that, you know, geologically challenged, where she is a STEM teacher and STEM specialist for grades K through 8. She also serves on the Board of Cobb County Alliance to Prevent Substance Abuse, and previously served on the Cobb Democratic Women as Vice President of Membership. She has volunteered and served as an Evaluation Director for programs with Destiny of Daughters' Promise nonprofit organization. She is a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, I know that part is important, and is a dedicated member of her non-denominational church, Grace Nation of Atlanta in Kennesaw, Georgia. Dr. Benson is a graduate from Alabama State University, where she received her undergraduate and graduate degrees. She received her doctorate from Argosy University, Atlanta, is Argosy graduates, okay, all right, in Educational Leadership K through 12. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr., I'm sorry, Dr. Vicky Benson. All right, post-three Democratic candidate and incumbent Leroy Trey Hutchins. Leroy Hutchins has been a resident of Cobb County, Georgia for nearly four decades, attending grade school in Cobb County and graduating from Pebblebrook High School and Cobb County Center of Excellence in Performing Arts in 1994. There we go, all right, all right, thank you. Where was, okay, Pebblebrook High School and Cobb County Center for Excellence in Performing Arts in 1994. Trey later attended Georgia State University and America Intercontinental University, earning a BFA in Film and General Media as well as an MBA. Trey is finalizing his doctoral studies at South College. Trey, as he's affectionately known, serves the community which helped raise him, as well as his sons Edward, Chemo, and Marlin. He is an advocate for public education and can be found serving South Cobb area of schools and the state of Georgia in many capacities. Trey currently serves on the Cobb County School District Board of Education for post-three, representing schools in Mableton, Austell, and Powder Springs. Trey also serves on several boards, including Georgia PTA, Austell Community Task Force, District 9 PTA, Lindley Middle School, PTSA Community, and the schools in Marietta Cobb County, as well as a state advisor panel member for the Georgia Department of Education and Special Education. In 2017, Trey formed the South Cobb Alliance, a steering committee committed to building a stronger South Cobb. Trey is also a graduate of Leadership Cobb Class of 2022 and the Regional Leadership Institute Class of 2023. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Trey Hutchins. Up next, we have post-five Democratic candidate Laura Judge. Laura Judge is a mom and a Navy veteran and a passionate educational justice advocate. She also is a volunteer that leads with Moms Demand Action and an active PTA member. She speaks during public commencement at school board meetings regularly, holds educational events for students at the county level, and shares the importance of keeping kids safe around firearms. Laura was raised in a household of educators. Her mother was always a volunteer at the school district, and her father made sure her and her siblings had the best education. When her family moved to Georgia, her mother became an educator with a daycare system, while her older and younger sisters became educators in the metro districts. While she admires their work in the classroom, Laura took a different path and became a scientist, not mad at you. Laura started her college education at the United States Naval Academy and finished her bachelor's in Bioscience Research at Farmingdale State University. She then went on to receive an AS in Medical Technology from Georgia Piedmont College Technical College after working as a medical technologist, I'm sorry, at Northside Hospital, and then as a verified engineer with a biotech company. She pursued getting her Six Sigma Green Belt Certification and her MS in Biomedical Diagnostics at Arizona State University. Laura is currently the President and Chief Operating Officer of Content Monster. Did I say it right? Okay, all right, Content Monster, a marketing business that she started with her husband. She recently served as the Educational Chair of Cobb County Commission District 2 Community Cabinet. Currently, she focuses on her children thriving in the school environment while supporting their extracurricular activities. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a round of applause for Laura Judge. All right, and last but not least, post-seven District candidate Andrew Cole. Andrew Cole is a proud Cobb native and Cobb graduate. He is the son of two career-long government professionals, a county lawyer, and a public elementary school teacher. After graduating from Harrison High School, he attended UGA, where he obtained a bachelor's degree in journalism, and began his career as the Director of Operations for the Strand Theater on Marietta Square. He moved to Chicago and began a career in medical technology, receiving an MBA in Marketing and Data Analysis from Loyola University, Chicago, and met his wife, Dina. The two began a family and moved back to Andrew's hometown of Marietta, and Andrew became involved in the community outreach and specifically CCS, I'm sorry, CCSD, Board of Education Activities. He is a proud and grateful husband, father of two, and immersed passionately in and cares about the community he serves and public education. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Andrew Cole. So candidates, we're gonna begin with an opening statement from you all. You have two minutes to do so. If you would pay right attention to the front, young, beautiful lady in the black dress with that fan, she's not fanning herself, that is a sign that you are halfway done, and then she'll hold it up again, and then the music will start playing, Mr. Sandman will come up and yank you. And so please abide by that sign. And once again, for those of you who are at home, we did invite all candidates to the forum, but we only got a response from the four that you see here today, all right? So if we can begin, you know, sometimes I'll pick this randomly. So let's start with Andrew Cole, we'll start on the other.
Good evening, thank you everyone for being here. I am Andrew Cole. I grew up here in Cobb County, graduated from Harrison, as you heard, in '06, and then after we started a family in Chicago, came back in 2020, and that was when, knowing we had kids now, I started paying more attention to the goings-on of the Cobb County School District. And immediately, on the evening of my first event, I quickly observed and concluded that we needed some improvements. And I spoke that night and asked for engagement and help. To date, I have not heard from my post-member, looking forward to that at some point. I know he knows how I feel now, but I do believe in community engagement, and that a myriad of reasons that I got involved in the first place is why I decided to run. So I do look forward to serving the community as a...
As a school board member for post-seven.
Thank you so much. Laura?
So good evening, everyone. I appreciate you all being here to make an informed decision about who your school board member might be. As most of the people up here and those that couldn't make it today, I'm sure we all want the same thing as successful schools. A little bit about me, for the past four years, I've been speaking at school board meetings, and at those school board meetings, I've spoke to community members, both there at the school board meeting and out in the community, and that's how I came about my platform, which goes over three main things: financial transparency, how they're spending our taxpayer dollars, and are they spending it well? Student safety? And then the third thing would be literacy of our students. We are currently hovering around 75%, which is great, but I also think that 100% could be better. This platform is not just about my kids. I have two kids in the Cobb County School District. It's about your kids, it's about all kids, really, regardless of their background, their race, or religion. As your elected board member, there's no thing to me as other people's kids. So I appreciate you guys coming. You might not hear everything that you want to hear up here tonight, and I encourage you to reach out, but again, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Trey?
Thank you. So yes, my name is Leroy Trey Hutchins. I currently have the privilege of serving on the Cobb County School District Board of Education, representing parts of Mableton, Austell, and Powder Springs. And what's unique about Post Three is that.
Post Three?
Is the only district within Cobb County Schools where all schools receive Title I funding. In addition to that, I'm the only board member that represents three municipalities. There's a lot of different challenges that come with that. Because I have three mayors that I also reach out to and engage with. I have three city councils that I go and meet with on a regular basis in and around the southern portion of the county. And we're excited to serve. So you stuck with me for another four years, so I thank the community of Greater South Cobb for trusting me to continue to serve in this capacity. Our mission hasn't changed. We're going to change the narrative of schools in the southern portion of the county. And we're going to do it one school at a time. We're going to have improved schools. We're going to have improved ratings. All children will learn to read in the southern portion of the county. And we're going to continue to work diligently until everyone has the same caliber of education that, that we have in Cobb County, because Cobb County Schools is a great school district. I'm a product of this great school district. And I know what we can provide, and so we're going to continue to work until all students have access to that. School safety is a challenge. We're going to work on that. And we're going to continue to work on that until we can put processes and things in place to ensure our children have safe schools. And that's more than just weapon detections and things of that nature. We're talking about mental health and some other factors. But we're going to continue to work on that as well. So thank you. I appreciate you.
Dr. Vicky?
Well, good evening. I'm Dr. Vicky Benson, and I represent Post One, which encompasses Acworth and Kennesaw. And I'm excited to be here and see the, the faces that. We want to make sure that we are meeting you where you are needed and we are accepting you as voices for our education pieces. So I don't like following behind other leaders because it gives me difficulty to explain exactly what I want you to understand about me. But I do want you to know that I am an accountable person, so I'm expecting accountability as I seek this position for this board. Also, fiscal accountability and responsibility is what is needed. We're also looking at school safety and as well as making sure that we continue with the academic success for other students. Now, as your future board member, I want you to know that these are my priorities. And I'm watching the funds because we cannot do any frivolous spending. We have to make sure we're focused on our student needs on a daily basis. And thank you for coming tonight. I got a signal. Have a good.
Thank you so much. Candidates, I'm going to ask that you remember to hold the mic up top. I think it's crackling because we hold it down the bottom. Yep, so all right. So we'll start off with a couple of general questions and then we'll try to get to some of the questions from some general folks that, that wanted to ask questions. And so Dr. Vicky made her statement, so we're going to start with her. Doc Vicky, what are the two top, what are the top two or three challenges facing Cobb County School District? And how do you plan to address those challenges?
The top two challenges as of right now, one of them is school safety. That is most important to me because I have grandchildren that attend the schools in Cobb County. And while I'm working during the course of the day, I actually follow to see exactly what is going on within this county itself. There is a plan that's been put on the books that should be, have actually gone through at this point or placed on the agenda, but unfortunately, it has not happened. So with that plan, we need to make sure we're carrying it forth to put our children in the best, safe environment that they can be in, especially when they are learning during the course of the day. And another priority is spending. You have to look at the resources that the school board has. They have a lot of money, okay? And they want to take this money, but they did want to take the money and, you know, build a building that was $50 million, which did not say anything for what it would help the students. And so resources are important to me. Making sure the teachers are getting the resources, resources that they need, making sure there's equitable spending across the county, and making sure that we are held accountable for what we are spending. So when I look at what is happening right now, those are the two priorities that I have concerns with. We should start looking at book banning. We should start looking at what's going on with our kids and making sure that they are healthy and well within the school district itself.
Laura, same question.
The top two for me, literacy is number one for me. I talk a lot about at the state level, we just had some laws passed for literacy in our schools. Unfortunately, it did not come with a fiscal note, but I've seen it work in our East Cobb schools. Our foundations have put forth with supplementing a teacher's salary to have Orton Gillingham and Wilson trained teachers, which use the science of reading. And I've seen in East Cobb schools, our reading levels go up to 85%. Like I said in my opening statement, District Y, we're at 75%. And so that's a big deal for me. And then a little similar to what Dr. Vicky said is financial transparency. I think we're doing really well with the budget, but I just think that we should have more conversations with our taxpayers to really know what's going on.
Andrew, same.
A rapper. Yeah. I get off a little easier because they've already touched on other aspects and ideas that I care very much about. So I want to add to that. And for me, that's going to be community engagement and transparency. What stood out to me on that very first night and still stands to me even more is the opportunity we have to actually receive feedback from our community in a proactive way. Right now, if you show numbers or you show repeatedly, maybe you'll get replies. If you get in the media, you'll get a reply sooner. And it shouldn't be that way. We should be reaching out and not just sitting at the top castle wondering if people need anything, if they get noisy enough. That's, that's not it for me. The second one would be just outright transparency. We are currently dealing with a board whose majority kind of pre-plans their actions and proposes in a back room and then comes out and page, and it shouldn't be that way either. When you've got a board majority who uses their power to make a new rule that requires a majority of the board members to even add an item to the agenda, you now have a runaway dictatorship in effect instead of an actual democracy. All representatives who are elected for their posts should actually be able to address their community and add items to the agenda for consideration and discussion.
Trey?
Priorities, school safety would be my first priority. The second priority would be ensuring that every school in Post Three has STEM programming, such as STEM, dual-language immersion, art integration, so that students have access to different types of programming that will help stimulate their academic growth so that we can start seeing some of the academic, closing some of those academic gaps that we currently have. And while I'm saying that for Post Three, I actually want to say it for all schools in Cobb School, in Cobb County. Thank you.
Keep the mic, Trey. Want to ask you this question. This goes for all of our candidates today. School safety, obviously, you all mentioned that. It's, it's become very prominent in our society right here in Cobb County, especially due to recent events. In light of the school shootings that we have seen, what should the school district do to ensure the safety of our students and staff?
As the board member who have experienced weapons showing up in your schools and, and shootings in our schools, this is challenging because I, I hear it from parents, from students, and from the district, from educators in those buildings. And so this is a very challenging question. Number one, because the Board of Education, we are not an operational body. We are a governing body, and all we do is set policy. The superintendent is responsible for the operations of the school district and keeping schools safe. And so it's challenging because we operate in a, in a, in a couple facets that controls the budget and things of that nature. We hire superintendents. We also evaluate superintendents. But the, the one area that I want to focus on is the budget and ensuring that we are setting aside monies allocated for safety, whether that look like electronic detecting devices, whether it looked at cameras, whether it was not necessarily metal detectors, but weapon detection. What we're talking about as far as mental health, do we need more counselors in our building? Do we have the right programming in place to ensure that children are safe in the building? That they're being kind to one another and that we, we have the right policy for bullying? So my area is still going to be public safety. It's going to be more than just, you know, weapon detection, but making sure that we can address the needs of the whole child.
Dr. Vicky, same, same question.
First of all, they need to get the agenda, get the safety plan on the agenda. That is the number one priority right now because they're not addressing those issues. And I attended the last board meeting and it was still not even on the agenda. And then that weekend, they had another shooting, even though it was in the middle school at a football game. So the problem is, is that other board members are not addressing what is happening. And they can call a meeting. They can actually call a meeting with the superintendent. The superintendent is supposed to make sure that the community understands what is being done to make sure that our students are safe, but he's not doing that. And he's calling the shots and, you know, he doesn't know his position either. So my thing is, is to make sure that the, the school safety plan gets on that agenda and it needs to be on the next board meeting.
Andrew?
Yeah, so in addition to, again, everything that's already been mentioned, I have to speak about the night that I announced my candidacy. One, I got involved in the first place because of school safety. The part-time armed mercenary safety policy that was proposed two years ago and rubber stamped caused me a lot of alarm, and it still does. I asked for more specificity regarding the training that it said it would require. You require training? What kind of training? You require certifications? What kind of certifications? And then the policy ends with, and if the superintendent deems it needed, he can approve anyone he sees fit. And it's just, it's just too broad when you're dealing with something as volatile as armed security in our children. And I want the very best. I understand what needs are and can be, but we have to put mortar between those bricks so that we can rest more assured. Secondly, regarding the shooting that occurred in the parking lot of McKeechurn earlier this year, the community wanted to come together and speak to their board. And some board members were present. The superintendent was not. And they, you know, it would make sense to use one of the large facilities on McKeechurn's campus. They were barred from that because the school safety discussion that the community wanted was a political event. So they had to meet in a, in the back of the Powder Springs Library instead of using a large accessible facility. On Week Two, just because he's here, I'm going to pat him on the back for it. They did allow for a second meeting to occur if someone covered the costs of using the facility that evening. That person was Trey Hutchins, whose post doesn't even include McKeechurn. That school is in Post Seven, which I'm running for. And as someone who grew up in Powder Springs, it was deeply disappointing to see how poorly that evening was held because the community was there. They came up with great ideas and they were essentially ignored.
Laura, would you like to answer a question as well?
So I'm going to take a different approach than the other three up here. So school safety is something I've been talking to this school board about since 2021. We have what people call hard schools. We have an alert point system similar to letting folks know teachers can alarm. We also have post-certified school resource officers. What I have been encouraging this board to do, like Mrs. Hutchins said, you know, we're more the governing body, is to remind parents about securing their firearms at home. You have 75% of school shootings come from kids who get their firearms from their house or someone that they know. So I have encouraged this board to remind families to do that. Also, I talk a lot about the state level because I feel like all our governing bodies should work together. The governor just signed for $45,000 per school for school safety. I'm asking and encouraging this board to put that into mental health resources, to let the schools know whether giving it to the parents to let them go to therapists or hiring more counselors to address the mental health needs. Because since what happened in Winder at Appalachia, I've heard from parents and students afraid to go back into school because of the shooting up there. And then our schools were getting threats right after. And so that's why they have wanted to speak to the school board about safety. And so that's what I encourage this board to do, and that is something that I look forward to do, doing as the board member.
All right, Laura, hold on to that mic and answer this question. While the Cobb County School District is one of the highest performing school districts in metro Atlanta, we've also seen disparities in student achievement outcomes across student subgroup populations. For example, according to a 2023 College and Career Readiness Performance Index, at elementary school level, 86.9% of white students are reading at or above grade level, while 64.6% of black students and 59.1% of Hispanic students are reading at or above, or above grade level. Furthermore, the following percentages of elementary students who are reading at or above grade level across additional subgroups. 57.3% for economically disadvantaged students, 53.4% for English language learners, and 48.7% for students with disabilities. How should the school board or the school district address these gaps?
So again, that goes back into the literacy, again, it kind of trickled down from the state that we have to put these programs in that follow that structured literacy or science of reading. Because we have seen it work in the Post Five schools. We have seen our reading levels go up, and I think we can see that across the district. And I'm excited to work with this board and the superintendent to see that increase, increased reading level across all groups of folks.
Yeah, one thing that comes to mind that I've heard from during canvassing, peoples, standing at people's doors, is the missing inclusion and involvement piece again. Parents who don't speak English as their first language aren't. Aren't receiving materials. Aren't receiving materials and communication that they can fully work with. The population of Cobb since I was a child here has doubled, and that's come with a growth in diversity. And it seems to be, I don't know if it's deliberate or incidental, but it's being avoided or under-engaged. And that is something that's very easy to rectify by, again, having town halls, interacting with your population and getting feedback because you have to reach out when people are busy running their own lives to be sure that you're properly serving everyone. So we're not closing the loop, and, and that's an easy improvement we can implement right away. As far as academic outcomes, there's an overlap with what Laura's already touched on and adding additional clarity for the context of how we score our, our subjects, our grades, and measure ourselves against our peers. You'll see often, we say we're the best in X, we're number one in Y, and we're not holding proper context there. You can compare yourself to every school in the country, but should you necessarily? I would want, you know, with house values, you look at comps. What's nearby? And that gives you a ballpark. If we're going to compare ourselves, we need to look at like districts and grades.
Trey?
Thank you. You know, if I was to give Brunessa my checkbook, she would know what my priorities were based on how I spend my money. And so when I'm looking at the challenges of having a very diverse school district, again, Post Three is the only district where all the schools receive Title I funding. That, that's an indicator that lets you know that the community is economically disadvantaged. And while we do receive funds, title funding, I'm always asking my question myself, what is the return on investment? You know, do we need to add more to that? Do we need to look at what program we currently offering? What are the wraparound services that we're currently offering students? Because students can't learn if they have exterior challenges that they are facing. And, and what can. And what can we do as a district to help support students in some of those things? I'm excited that this year, all of the schools in, in post-three will receive, they're participating in the community eligibility program and they're receiving free breakfast and lunch. And as well as other schools around the county, I believe it's, I don't know the number, Becky. Is it 26, 38, 38 schools? Thank you. And so I'm excited about that. But when I'm starting to look at disproportionality in, in reading scores, when I'm looking at disproportionality in discipline, you know, there's a lot of data that's out there that says we have some challenges and we have some room for growth and improvement. And so I would like to see us focus on that. You know, the state currently has a formula out notating the lowest 25% of performing schools, 25% of performing schools in the state. We have those in Cobb. Three of them happen to be right down the street. My children went to them. And so I would like to see focused attention on those schools and having a plan of action for them to improve and get off that list. So, thank you.
When we're looking at to address these gaps, you want to look at the achievement gap. You want to align your achievement gap with the opportunity gap for students learning, having access. If students are having access, we're able to focus on the proactive data that sits before us to make sure that our students are learning within the classroom itself. You also want to focus on additional services for our students. They may need a reading coach. They may need a STEM specialist or a STEAM specialist to show them hands-on learning, more active learning within the classroom. So these percentages are not really daunting, but you really have to look at the disparities among the different groups or subgroups based on what they are learning and how they are getting their information. You have to look at where these students actually come from so that you can be able to put them in place of understanding their, their test scores, their families. You have to bring these people in to understand what needs to get done for these students to learn and how they should learn so they can meet where they need to be within their, within their, within their, within their school. Most of the time it starts with the leadership of the school. And so they have to make sure that they are actually having these data meetings and having the, the PLCs with professional learning centers so that they can know how to reach the kids. And so if students have opportunities to achieve more, then it will be, they will have better reading scores and they are able to do whatever is necessary to, to meet the goals that is needed within the state of, within the county itself.
Dr. Vicki, hold that mic. Next question. What are your views on public charter schools, especially in areas where traditional schools are underperforming?
In my opinion, I believe charter schools are public schools. It depends on what schools or what, what district that you're in. And I'm gonna just say that this, because when I was in Fulton County, they had charter public schools. And I was on the governing body as one of the governing body teachers. And so they actually didn't, I mean, they did everything that the state wanted them to do. But I guess the school choice is left up to the parent if they want their child to, to be a part of a public charter school. It's not, it shouldn't be a board thing or, or whatever. It should be, it should be actually the parent that's making sure that their children are attending whatever they feel that necessary for their children to attend. I don't think it should be anything to do with the board members making that choice for the, for the, for the public charter schools.
Laura?
I'm for parents educating their children the best way possible. I would not like our students to leave our public school system to go to a public charter school. But I understand when you are dealing with an underperforming school and you need to educate your child, I think that should be your first goal. And then working on getting that school to not be underperforming anymore. So that's how I feel about that.
Trey?
Public charter schools are public schools. And I actually work in a public charter school. Go Trailblazers. And so I think the narrative that charter schools are less or, I'm not really sure what the issue is. But what I will say is, I believe that parents should be able to choose whatever learning option is best for their child. And if that happens to be charter school, then we go with charter school. In my area, my predecessor, David Morgan, was an advocate for charter schools. And I fought him. Oh my gosh, I was at every rally, I was at every meeting and I was like, nope, we ain't doing it. Until, until I began to sit in this seat. And then I had to call him and say, hey, I need to take you out for steak and a, and a beer and I need to apologize. Because again, if we can't meet the need, someone has to meet the need. And so whatever option that looks like for parents, I'm for it. Thank you.
Andrew?
Thank you. Going along with what Trey was just talking about, I think interest or need to the point of citizens and parents and caretakers asking for a charter school option is indicative of the shortcomings of a public school district. And it would be my goal and dream for the bus that comes to your neighborhood to take you to a school that is perfectly sufficient, if not exceeding. And I know we can't fix everything overnight, but it's connected, again, to feedback and engagement. Because in an ideal relationship, all of those needs that people feel aren't being addressed or funded or served properly could be. And then your charter schools are your existing public schools. That would be my ideal outcome. I have heard, again, from people on their front porch about what they're running into and how they arrive at that place. So I completely understand and sympathize with the need and the interest. But there's a way to bridge the gap that exists right now and that's what I would want to explore first. And in that, if something is still failing, I, I do understand the desire to create a more formal management system, but I would like to try to fuse that, if at all possible, first.
Laura? Did I miss anybody? No? Well, we're not gonna make you answer again.
But I will take the next question.
Give you the next question. For those of you who are just joining us online, we have four candidates up here. Seven in total, but we invited everyone. Everyone didn't respond, so that's why we have our four. And thank you all for being with us once again. So let's move on. Students' wellbeing and mental health has become a prevalent topic across many school districts, including right here in Cobb. What is the best way for schools to address students' mental health needs? Laura?
So again, with post-five, we have very rigorous schools over there. We're, um, post-five covers the Walton Wheeler and Pope High School areas, a little bit of Sprayberry as well. And it starts in kindergarten. These kids getting the anxiety, the push to succeed and do well. So again, I think it comes down to counselors. I think it comes down to that community involvement, talking to the counselors, talking to the admin team, letting them know that their kids are struggling and that's okay. It's okay to fail. Something that a counselor has told one of my children, it's okay to fail sometimes. To kind of get that pressure off and then they can keep thriving in their environment.
Trey?
Thank you. You know, when it comes to mental health, I believe we have some of the great, some of the best counselors in our schools right now, currently. But I want to make sure that they have all the tools that they need in their toolbox to meet the needs of our children. When we're talking about being culturally competent and making sure you have the pedagogy to actually reach every child, that's, that's, that's training, that's a skill set. And so it's great to have a counselor. You know, I believe we're maybe, we may have our numbers pretty, they're, let's just say, what is the number? Is it 250 per student? Am I correct? A school counselor? And I think we're somewhere around what, 400-ish? You know? And we may be better than most in the state with that because we have adequate resources. But can we do better? Absolutely. Two, a couple of years ago, two young ladies came to the board meeting, two girls from Pebblebrook High School. And they said, hey, we need more mental health counselors because in high school, they have guidance counselors who are working on transcripts and making sure you graduate, or school counselors, right? So I just texted someone and I said, hey, can we get someone who can help address the mental health needs of those students at this school? And we had it. We, and we were able to get it done and able to get that allotment in place. Students need more than what we're offering. And so I would like to see us be able to address some of those mental health needs, specifically in high school, around how, having more supports around school counselors to help address some of that mental health in the high school space.
Thank you, Dr. Vicki.
As Trey has mentioned about the counselors, yes, we do need the counselors to make sure they're in, they're intervening in, in many cases with our students. I have noticed that our students at some point do decline a lot during the course of the day. They get frustrated, they are not able to function, they are not able to complete their assignments like they need to. So in, in the support actually comes from home too as well. So if we are coming together as counselors, teachers, community leaders or whomever that we can come, that we can bring in to help with our students would be, would be, would be great. I am a part of the Cobb County Alliance for Prevention of Substance Abuse. And so we, they do partner with some of our schools here within Cobb County, but some of them, they won't let, the principals will not let them come in to help with our students who may be suffering from substance abuse. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing if we can get the, you know, them to partner with other schools because we do have issues with that happening with our kids. And especially now that we are all, I guess we're post-pandemic. You know, something else has come about with the, with the COVID. But I'm hoping that we can have more resources and more services for our students who are having problems or who are struggling with different things that are happening within their life circumstances.
Andrew?
I love Laura's idea about starting early. My daughter came home last night and asked my wife, can you, can you please check my folder? Cause she can't read what homework is right now. And so I, I saw it and heard about it firsthand, how it happens that early. And so I, I love that idea. The ratio that Trey touched on is a key part of that. And there's not really another way to fix that without funding and staffing. And if you have hundreds of millions of dollars more in your budget because home values have gone up and you've left your mortgage rate high, where's that money going? And is there something that matters more than our children's mental health? And that's preparing them to succeed in the classroom and then also in life. The second part of that is crisis management training. And regarding, and it's connected to school safety. And so a quick answer is, oh, metal detectors or guards. Okay, let's look at what's been measurably proven to reduce instances in the first place. And it's crisis management training. Identifying students in need, reaching out to them and giving them access to the services that can help them channel that. All right. I just, I, sorry, it's. All right. So reaching out to the students that need it and then helping them adapt and evolve so that they can adjust and succeed in the short term and long term. And then that has been shown over and over. If those systems and methods are properly invested in and rolled out, it makes our entire school district and community safer and better and more successful. And again, is there anything that can matter more than that? I, I don't think so and I think it's worth funding.
Did you have a feeling you were at Kmart just a minute ago? I saw the look on your face, I saw it. Keep the mic, Andrew, and answer this question for us. Continuing on the topic of students' wellbeing and safety, during the school board meeting in the past year, we've seen some families and students highlight experiencing discrimination based on race, religion, their ability and sexual orientation within Cobb County School District. If elected, how will you work to ensure the Cobb County School District schools are inclusive and affirming learning environment, affirming learning environments for all children? And what policy changes, if any, should the board adopt to address these issues?
So to, to fix this, again, it's, it's caused by a myriad of needs and circumstances. And so to address it, we're going to have to do a number of things. And my first go-to, as always, is actually engaging and having town halls, getting feedback from our community in a formal and maybe informal or passive way where there's always a line or a reporting system. Right now, what I've heard from students, parents, teachers, academic, upper-level district leaders are seeing and hearing that reported issues or needs are just completely waived and ignored. Kids will be kids. Well, I think we all saw recently that kids aren't always just kids. One thing can lead to another and you're only as strong as your weakest link. And so if someone is highlighting an opportunity or a need, it's worth addressing. And today, not in a month or a year. So that's something that I would want to pursue right away. And then also admitting that we don't know everything. We can't understand what people are going through or need. And instead of resting on, I would say, political partisan laurels, we're okay with being open to feedback and recommendations from specialists and not politicizing perfectly successful anti-bullying plans and measures that have been shown to work in an academic setting. Because what works is what matters, not what we want or feel.
Dr. Vicki?
To be inclusive and affirming learning environments, you have to include the parents. That is first and foremost. And you have to make sure that the parents are involved all the time. And you must be able to communicate with the parents all the time. I find myself communicating every day, even on my personal cell phone, calling parents, talking to them about what the issues are to see if we can resolve those issues. So we have to come together to make sure that the parents are involved. That is the number one thing. This is how it operates in a school setting. We just can't do this job by ourselves. So we want to make sure the parents are part of our advisory committees, making sure that they have their own opinion and tell us some things that they would like for us to do. And then we actually cooperate with each other to make sure it happens within our school districts. So policy changes. We have to put the public back in education. That is the number one thing. We can't silence the public. We have to make sure you are involved and making sure that we are coming together as one.
Laura?
So you touched on a little bit about the, the rising hate and discrimination. And something that I have seen in the past since I've been speaking at school board meetings is this has increased since the No Place for Hate program was removed from our school district. And it is something that I have encouraged this board to implement back into the district or another comprehensive program. Because similar to a little bit of what Andrew said, is we don't know everything. I went and spoke to some Jewish members of my community and I requested a rabbi to be there. Because again, I was raised Christian. I don't know everything about the Jewish community. And I think when students are experiencing this, a comprehensive program that explains why hate looks the way it does, we can at least bring that level of hate down and try to eradicate it out of our district.
Thank you. In an attempt to measure what I say, not, because I'm more than just a candidate, I'm still a sitting board member. And so I have to make sure I measure my statements accordingly. This is still a school safety issue. It's still a school safety challenge. If kids do not feel safe in schools, you're not going to get the best outcomes. And I have watched children make adult decisions because they didn't feel safe and they didn't trust the adults in the space to keep them safe. And so we see weapons showing up on campuses and things of that nature because children don't feel safe. And, and it's a challenge for me because I believe that we can address it across the board by making sure that we address the, the, the mental health side of it, making sure that we have the proper bullying policy in place, which- which also includes having curriculum in place to help children to manage and to cope with different situations. But that's going to take a budgetary line item to help add some mental health to, to our schools. And so I think we can, I think we can address it. I believe that we can do it as a district. It's going to take the entire community to do it because this is just not a school district problem. I believe it's going to be a conversation that we have with, with our county and our community service board and other players in Cobb County as well. Because I don't think we can do it alone and I don't think we should do it alone. And so it's going to be a, a, a very challenging way forward to make sure that we address the needs of all students in Cobb County.
Trey, you mentioned the budget. See, right there. The, part of the responsibility for the school board is approving the district's budget. The 2024-25 general fund budget was about $1.6 billion. What are your thoughts on the current budget for this school district? And what are your budget priorities? And how will you work to ensure these priorities are taken into account during the budgeting process?
Okay, thank you. I approve the budget. One of the ones that said yes. So I think the budget's fine. But, but I, again, I want to make sure that we're clear. We approve a budget that is presented to us. And these are, this balanced budget that's given to us from the superintendent. So oftentimes, again, it's going to take ensuring that every board member has the ability to address the concerns of their constituency and then turn around and see those things end up in a budget. And so that's part of the challenge that I would like to see us moving forward to ensure that we are addressing the needs of the entire community in how we spend our money. And so I believe that's going to be part of it. When it comes to the budget, I think in Cobb County, I am one of three people that have a certificate from Georgetown University in education finance. I believe Becky Saylor has received hers just recently and Alicia Thomas Cersei. And, and so when I'm looking at the budget and I'm looking at different line items, I believe that there is a way that we can get closer to meeting the needs of children and getting the money into those teachers' hands to make sure that they have the resources that they need to properly address concerns and challenges within their classrooms.
Okay, again, go into the budget meetings and hearings. And I agree with you, we have, we have a good budget. But again, like Trey mentioned, it is presented to them. What my priority with the budget is to involve the public. We are supposed to have three budget hearings. It has been now changed to a public comment section of two-minute public comments without input from the community. I think we need to have more town halls and more like hearings from the community about the budget. But I, overall, I think our budget does look good after some discussion.
Andrew?
Again, when I'm out talking to voters in the West Cobb area, people have understandable concerns when they've seen their tax rate and amount go up year over year. And then you look at some of the high-level indicators. Okay, number of schools is mostly the same, enrollments mostly the same. Let's adjust it for inflation. Okay, we're still far surpassing that. Our staffing is adjusted, accounted for in these comparisons and estimates. And so people rightfully have questions. What's missing is clarification and communication from the decision-makers. And that's only going to be fixed with a leaning in of wanting to bridge that gap between the district and leaders and the community. And so that would be one aspect that I'd want to satisfy. The other piece is showing to what's been discussed also, the prove, proven returns on investment for where we're allocating those funds. People are, again, I think rightfully justified to ask, why are we bringing this much in and where is it going? Because I'm feeling the pinch on my bill every year and I, I don't understand why we need so much more year over year. So explain it, clarify it. I, I've been saying just somewhat, I mean, not somewhat, fully genuinely, I would want to give TED Talks on how the millage works, what it's going to and what we're investing in in our community. Because everyone is a stakeholder. And I think these are perfectly acceptable questions that need true verifiable answers.
Dr. Vicki?
Now, we all recognize that our taxes is an investment to our students. And so we have to look at how we are investing. I know in 2020, when I was running for this same post, that there were many organizations or I should say businesses that were involved. And there was no transparency. There has to be transparency when you are dealing with a school budget. You have to make sure that you are, as Laura has said, those three different budgeting meetings and making sure you're meeting and understanding what those items are line by line and what, where the, where is the money going? And how is it going to make an impact as far as supporting the school district and the students? So we just have to be very, very careful what we're doing when it comes to improving our buildings, improving the, our, our, or making sure that our teachers are getting with their needs too. And our students are getting the resources that they're need, that they're needing. So when I'm thinking about a budget, I want to know how things are being bought, what is being, item, is item by item for each different school. So there must be some equity piece in this budget that needs to be seen as they go through the budget. And as they've stated, the budget does look good, but we need to know where the money is actually going through the school district.
All right, Dr. Vicki, you keep the mic. Last question for you.
Trey, do you mind, can I just have a passionate add-on? If you'll indulge, I'll, I'll sacrifice time for another question. Thank you, thank you. So with what she just mentioned, I, I very much want to explain why, again, I think people are justified to be a little cynical when it comes to spending from our current school board majority because they've seen wasteful investments. Over $10 million going into machines that when we bought them, we knew had no effect against COVID-19. But we put them in all of our schools because so-and-so knew so-and-so and it is what it is. That's unacceptable. The UV lights that were not functional and have now cost much more money to either maintain, repair or remove. The same thing is going to happen with these hand-rancing stations. Eventually, we'll have to find something to do because that company's now fully out of business. On top of that, we have entered into lawsuits that we weren't even named in, hired friendly law firms and now spent over $1.8 million with them to defend something that we weren't even ascribed to in the first place. And that law firm is turning around and donating to the Republican school board members. So if anyone has questions or concerns about appropriate behavior and fiscal responsibility and transparency.
Andrew, we're gonna have to cut you off.
All right.
All right, thank you. Last question for all of you, all right? Recently, there has been a noticeable increase in the number of books being challenged or banned from school libraries and curriculums across the country, often due to content or themes. Could you please share your stance on book banning within our schools? Specifically, how you would balance concerns about sensitive content with the importance of exposing students to diverse cultural perspectives and historical significant, I'm sorry, events and periods? Yes, yes.
It's a parent decision. Historically, some of the books that are being banned has a whole lot to do with, well, that I've noticed with the African-American and other cultures too. We really need to learn what is actually important.